Existing councilman, and we are very, very fortunate. For those of you that have not gone through this before, we're really, really fortunate to have two individuals that have done this for a fair number of times and have been here for orientation of councilmen here in Guthrie for a number of times, but also councils throughout the state. And so we have that. We have also all of our Team Guthrie here. So it is going to be a great morning. And I think I'll just turn it over. Eddie, are you going to open up?
I believe we'll have a liberal kickoff for us.
Well, the first presentation is from O-MAG. David, do you go first?
No.
Mr. Tackett will go first, and then David will follow, and then I will leave the comments over once they're done.
Ladies and gentlemen, mayors, thank you. We appreciate you all having us back. And we were talking with the mayor earlier. We've been all around the state. David's been doing this probably for 15-plus years. We're unaware of any other town in the state that has a workshop like you all do to provide orientation and education to your members. It's unique in the state. We want to commend you all for doing that. We've used your material in other communities and encouraged them to adopt the model that Guthrie has. So it's an impressive model that you all have for orientation and education. For the new folks, my name's Bill Tackett, and I'm with O-MAG, the Oklahoma Municipal Assurance Group. We're your insurers. We're not a private insurance company. We're a Title 74 interlocal cooperative act agency. A Title 74 is the most powerful tool that you all have in state law. It's very simple. It says whatever Guthrie can lawfully do by itself, you can find a partner to do it with them. There's all kinds of interlocals around. David Weatherford, who's the gentleman we've partnered with for all these many years, who has created all this educational material. David is the city attorney for Sand Springs, along with Manford and Mounds, and Arkoma, and soon Disney. And Sand Springs and Sepulpa have an interlocal to construct and operate a raw water line from Skytoak Lake down to their water treatment plant. They went together jointly, built it, they jointly operate it. So the interlocal agreements that you guys perform can be with other cities, can be with county, can be with schools, tribes, federal government. I don't know why you'd ever do that, or Carol from Texas. It's a very powerful tool. We got started June 1st, 1977, Chalk Towne Village. Got us started from 40, almost six years ago, I guess. In a couple of days, from those two towns, we have 500 cities and towns that belong to us, all within the state of Oklahoma. So it's a pretty short list of the cities and towns that don't belong to O-MAG. You all get your work comp, property, and liability coverage from us. We also can provide airport coverage on an appropriate basis, canine mortality, surety bonds. We have a lot of, because we're not a private company, we don't pay dividends to some fat cats back in New York City. We've got resources for grants and education and scholarships for our members. We try to do those things that we think will lower our risk. We do this training because even though there is newly elected officials training, we don't fuss with that, that's fine training. But we come to you and do this training because when we looked around, we saw that we support Lexapro for the police. That's your policy manual. We have grants for body worn cameras for police. We have grants for sewer cameras, public works, works on safety equipment. We have scholarships for mayor's conference and city manager's conference, and clerks and treasurers, and finance officers training. We said, what do we have for you all in addition to the OML scholarships we have for their conference? Well, there wasn't a lot of training, except that David had started training 15 or more years ago, city councils. You all are the ones that allocate resources. You hire key people, such as the manager, and you all are the ones that set policy. And so we believe the best-run cities and towns have fewer claims. The claims that you do incur cost less money to resolve. That's why O-MAG cares about this training. There's really nowhere for you all to go to learn to be the board of directors of this municipal corporation. And unfortunately, there's nobody else that really does the orientation like you all do. And so we're grateful to be back and grateful to be here, as you guys have welcomed a new manager, and Leroy's handed a baton off. David Weatherford, Aubrey Weatherford, are with Municipal Consultants. We partnered with them for a very long time. They've created a lot of content in partnership with O-MAG. David is an attorney in Tulsa that's in private practice. He also serves as city attorney in those communities I spoke about earlier. Aubrey Weatherford is the one that actually makes the whole thing go, and she's an integral part of it. So with that, I'll turn it over to David, and I think he's got a video for you all to see.
Since we've been here several times, we wanted to do something a little bit different. So one of the best things we've done in working with O-MAG is, over the years, we've collected lots of videos of officials from around the state and asked questions of them similar to what we would ask of you. And that is, what's it paid for a city to be successful? So we have about a 10-minute video of a wide variety of officials, and I think since we've been here several times, thought it would be something different, and that'd be a good approach for you. So, see what you think.
Aubrey makes it work.
Craig Stevenson, City of Ponca City, city manager. As a newly elected city official, I would encourage you to sit down, go through an orientation process. We have an orientation process here that I sat down with the newly elected commissioners, and we go through a very thick book, outline who the current staff are, give them their resumes, so they know their background. That's part of allowing the elected person to know that they're a professional. It's not somebody that was appointed to a position. All of our staff are highly trained in their area, are experts in their area. And that gives comfort to the elected person that they've got a solid individual guiding and directing that specific part of the operation. So I think it's real important. I also think it's important that they get to training outside of the community, because I think it's important that they learn how other communities may operate.
Mike Nunley, City of Manford. I think chemistry is the most important. It doesn't matter whether it's basketball or football, probably basketball the most because you only have five people you're looking at. It only takes one or two that really are thinking more about themselves than the chemistry of the whole team to destroy anything. And you see it every day where teams that have much more talent get beat by teams with less talent, because it's five against three, and five against two instead of five against five.
How do you accomplish that on a city level?
I think you strive for success, and you explain to them that it isn't successful for two people or three people. It's only successful for five people. And if it's a failure, it's five, or seven, or nine, however many council members there are.
My name is Mike Burge, City of Sand Springs, Oklahoma. I think one of the first things a city, that a councillor should learn is the definition of integrity. The next thing that you recognize is character, how strong a part that that plays in everything that you do. You can go through a long list of things that you do's and don'ts, but I believe in those two things, integrity and character, everything's contained in those two things.
I'm Eric Benson. I'm the city manager of Vina, where I've been doing that job for the last eight years. I'm proud of our relationship. I suppose you wouldn't expect me to say anything else, but it happens to be the truth. Not without our rough spots, but they respect my responsibilities, and I try very hard to identify and respect theirs. As we all well know, the city council's role is more restricted than that of the chief executive. But as long as I keep them updated, as long as they know why, what I'm doing, we've had a very good arrangement. And it's not always been easy, and sometimes I feel pressured to go wrong, perhaps. And I would also feel that, as I've expressed to them, that we all have the same ethical compass and points on the moral north. It's really to set the course toward success. A class I received some time ago has served me very well. The city council is the board of directors of a multi-million dollar corporation. They have the interests of the community writ large as their first priority. And yes, they have different slants and different priorities on elements of the community, but they have to view the operation as a business. Cost control, revenue generation, profit and loss computations, and the direct impact of their opinions, be they political or pragmatic, they can't shy from those principles.
We don't bring items to the governing body except policy decisions. We also go through an orientation process so they understand what their role is. And I delineate what that role is. The other thing is, we go through a very detailed budget process that outlines strategic goals and objectives for each department. And they walk through each department and what they accomplished in the current year and what they propose to accomplish next year, so they stay at a high level and they understand the policy.
My name is Homer Nicholson, and I'm a mayor of Ponca City, Oklahoma. It's important that our elected officials understand that they are a lawmaking, governing body, and we have a city manager form of government. So the city manager and his department heads operate and run the city, not the commission. And that's a little bit confusing at times for new commissioners. They do not tend to the daily responsibilities and tasks and duties. It's the city manager and his staff responsibility.
Tyler Mucker, Mayor of Manford. It went from a time of where everybody thought about themselves, how they could benefit, and just total chaos, off-the-cuff remarks, off-the-cuff motions, it was completely out of control, to now, a lot more organized, the way it's supposed to be. Traveled a lot to different cities, to watch other mayors, how they run their meetings, watch other councils, how they conduct themselves, and that was pretty much the major of my training, the most of my training.
Does your work do a lot with each other?
Work gets along very well now. It went from, like I said, a time of chaos to now a time of where everybody is there for the city, not for themselves. City's seen a lot of growth, new retail development, residential development going on right now, and that has a lot to do with the council having a vision and everybody on the same page.
We do have good meetings, and I know some people would laugh about that, but one of the things, the training that we got from the training from O-MAG was that, hey, our meetings aren't so bad. And so we have the same structure every time, we have the same expectations of our staff and of our commissioners, and I think all of us knowing what's expected of each other really makes for a good meeting. We discuss and we debate. There's not a lot of argument, and again, I think that's from being prepared. Find out the information you need beforehand if you have a problem with something. Generally, we work to build consensus, and so there'll be times when we agree to disagree, but I would say arguing is out of the minimum.
Our commission does not discuss agenda items or argue with agenda items. We may discuss casually some agenda items, but we do not have arguments. That is one thing that I can take pride in, in Ponca City, that we always work together. I don't know of any issues, I don't remember in seven years of any issues that we have got into any strife or embarrassing situations. We may discuss an item, have a length, lay out the pros and cons of an issue, so that we know what we're voting on, but we've always been able to work together in unison as a governing body. A side comment, one time a citizen, our commission meetings are televised, and one time a citizen had commented that they were going to quit watching our commission meetings because we never got in a fight. So I can't cry in that comment.
We put items on there for action. We don't bring items that are mixed in nature, their policy setting. We provide a tremendous amount of background to the city commission prior to that meeting. We may have had a work session on that particular item or that policy, so they have a clear understanding, and they've been able to vet the background and the information and make a good decision. So when we get to the regular commission meeting, they have a tremendous amount of information, and they feel very comfortable, I believe, in making the decision that they make. The other thing that I think is real important is, time is valuable, and city commissioners and governing body members are volunteers. And as staff, we want to be respectful of that time and do not want to bother them with trivial items.
I worked 38 years in the corporate world, and I would say that our commission meetings and all of our meetings are held and conducted in a very dignified, courteous manner. We respect each other's comments, we give each person their time to weigh their thoughts, pros and cons, and we lay those thoughts out on the table, we massage those ideas, and try to come to a general consensus that everybody can live with.
My name is Bill Shury. We are in Hennepin, Oklahoma, and I am the mayor of the, I run it as a business meeting. We stick by the agenda, and when we get to a general decision, we don't sit around and discuss things. What if votes are votes, and what's the vote is taken, I move to the very next item. We strayed that way in the banking industry. Later or not, it was good for it. We do have a lot of things to write in Hennepin, Oklahoma.
Your city had some of the worst meetings of any city around. What was that like?
They weren't the worst. You saw some of, they are absolutely the worst. It was agendas for two people, and those two people would garner as many negative people as they could to come to meetings, to make it a social platform for them. And in that time, not one bit of progress happened in our community. I believe it's imperative that if you want quality people to continue to be council members, it needs to be an experience that they can enjoy, that's not a burden on them.
They've been very successful. They've been very committed. My commissioners have brought a new face and new dynamic to our community, a place that we all called home and will always call home. I'm very proud of our commission's ability to do that. They are very professional, they're very committed, but they're very well-prepared for their job, not only from their studies, but also the contribution of the staff to their reading packages. Our council respects each other. It's one of the first things that we document through a variety of O-MAG and OML training, and one of the things that spoke to me the loudest was that with each vote, you have to respect the vote of your contemporary, and you have to respect the vote of those who made decisions before your elected period. In other words, unless you're a part of the decision, you don't know how it came about. I'm very proud of our commission's ability to cooperate with each other. And sometimes emotions interact. I'm no stranger to that. Sometimes I'm the instigator, and sometimes it serves me well, and often it doesn't. And I try to remind myself, and my commissioners also remind me, that we have to respect their stances, and it has served us well.
I'll get it back to PowerPoint. Hopefully it helps to hear from some others around the state. I mentioned before, one of the better things I think we've done at O-MAG is capture a lot of video. You see on the tape Mike Nunley died a couple of years ago, and one of his comments at the Hall of Fame banquet was, "We should not take our knowledge with us." And I think it's important to capture that from others who have served. Many on the video, or some on the video have retired, or moved on, or died, and it's good to remember what made them successful and what works. Because I don't think there's anything unique and different about Guthrie and every other of the 500 cities that is not the same. We have the same issues, we deal with the same problems, the path to being successful is very similar. And I think there's some reoccurring themes. All of our questions to those you heard were scripted as questions, none of the answers were. And I think it's interesting to hear that perspective from some of them. You have some of that with Leroy, who's retiring, so we'll hopefully capture Leroy on some video at some point, and hopefully talk about the difficulty of transitioning from unstable government to stable, because you've made a good transition over the last 10 years. That really makes Guthrie a good model that others should look to and see, how do we become a successful city? Part of what we do in evaluating how we're doing is take a test. So we're going to, if I can get this to work, we're going to skip some of the slides and...
Go back.
We're going to take a test. The test was developed, and we've given it every time we've come here. It was developed, you should have a score sheet in front of you. I'm going to go through and explain some of the questions and a little bit of background. The test was developed to help us evaluate how we're doing. It should be used as an evaluation tool to give us some ideas. And this test was developed by experts in the field who say these are the 10 areas of city government that we should evaluate on a regular basis to see how our city is operating. Question number one deals with finances, and it's how financially stable is your city? Do you have enough money to operate? The public expects your city to be solvent, just like they expect their local bank to be solvent. Does everyone have a score sheet? Not everyone. Do you have a score sheet?
The inside, your little book up there.
The little book.
Should be sticking on top of it.
There you go. So you're going to give a score between 1 and 10, and the first question is, how financially stable is your city? A 10 would be a city that has a written policy that requires at least 20% of the general fund is a reserve and you fully funded. A 1 would be the city that's lucky to make payroll. We've seen both extremes. We've seen cities in which council members raise their hand and say they have no idea, they've only been on council 10 years, and they don't get regular financial reports. We sometimes like to cheat on this one, and is your finance director here?
Yeah.
Kim. What score would you give on this one?
I was going to go with an 8.
Okay, and why an 8?
Six years ago, we were struggling with what we had in our bank accounts, but today our rainy day fund has been fully funded, the other will be by the end of the year. We're funding the bank.
Good.
And we're doing very well. Our sales tax is up.
And do you have a written policy that sets those reserve funds?
We do have, we do.
Good. When we started doing this training, I believe there was one city, maybe two or three we weren't aware of, one that we became aware of that had a financial reserve policy. And they had one because they almost went bankrupt, and they worked with Crawford and Associates and created one.
That's what we did.
That's what you did, and hopefully it's made your city better. Does it make your job much easier as a finance director?
It does.
And hopefully gives some assurance to council that you're financially solvent, because we have cities who are flat broke. And when you are broke, you make different decisions, don't you? That economic development opportunity that comes along is not an option. Those cities have lots of turnover because they can't retain employees. It really is in the employee's interest for the city to have a good reserve policy, as well as council's interest. So that's a good thing. And six years ago, you had probably no policy?
We did have a policy in place, we just didn't have the money.
We had more fun.
And we had to make some tough decisions in 2017, and we've grown from that, so...
A part of your job as a board of directors for the organization is to ensure that you comply with that policy, unless you think it needs to be changed and updated, and then you change and update it and have staff comply with it. And that is an important role for each of you as a part of financial oversight. Again, we have cities who have no policy, we have cities who are broke, everything you can imagine out there. And there's a reason this question is first on the test. It's the most important, because if you fail at it, everything else gets more difficult. So, good that you're doing that. Number two, how stable is the governing body? We want, as you heard on the video, it's important to have a stable governing body, and a part of that stability is, it should be enjoyable to serve. And that's a part of staff's job, is to work toward accomplishing that. A high score is you have great, well-informed, engaged elected officials. When you have elections, you get good, qualified people who want to serve. A low score is, you look around and say, I wish we could throw them all out and start over. And we've been in cities in which everyone sitting up there wrote down a 1, and it's a sign that they've got a problem. So give a score of how stable is the governing body. I am convinced that good governing bodies attract good people to serve with them, and the opposite is true. Bad ones attract bad people to serve with them, because they enjoy the chaos. So a part of your role is to make it a prestigious honor to serve on this council. That is a part of your job, so that other good people will want to be a part of it. Number three, how are your meetings? You heard some discussion on the video about meetings. Some are good, some are bad. A high score is they should be professional, businesslike, you enjoy attending them. Low score is they're miserable, there's lots of arguing, out-of-control public, wish you never had to go to another one. Not a good way to live, not a good way to work, and not a good way to serve your community. And there's some cities that function that way. You saw on the video some discussion at Manford. I unfortunately was the attorney there during the first 10 years of those miserable meetings, in which every one of them was a miserable experience. They've now been 15 years of stability and tremendous growth in doing that. I think we can statistically show what happens when you do business the right way, because of growth and economic development. Number four, how's the workforce? A high score is, you have a good workforce, they care about the city, enjoy their work, proud to work for the city. Working for the city should be a prestigious honor these days, and that's very hard with the times we live in. Low score is the city that just has constant turnover, doesn't pay well, doesn't provide much in benefits, and they usually have more claims. It's hard to do in a city this size when you have to evaluate the workforce, also hard to do when you have a limited role in it. In a city manager city, that's the city manager's job. But give a score of how you evaluate your workforce. Number five, what's the public image of your city? What's the public think of the city government of the city of Guthrie? A high score is, there's a lot of public confidence that if something needs to be done, the city will play an important, positive role in it. A low score is that city in which there's just no confidence in government, because it's not perceived as competent and professional. And that really is what the public expects to have a high level of confidence, is they expect the city government to be competent and professional. And if we keep that in mind, it gets a little bit easier. Public image is a very difficult thing in the age of Facebook and social media. That hasn't made it easier, it's made your jobs harder. And no matter what you do, you will get some criticism. So give a score on how the public image is. Part six, crisis management. Government exists to deal with those things that go wrong, floods, tornadoes, bad incidents that come along. How well-prepared are we as a team to deal with that? High score is, we have the pieces in place to take care of it, we're prepared, we know what to do. Low score is, I have no idea, we don't deal with that. Okay? So how well-prepared are we for a crisis? Number seven, economic development. 30 years ago, this would not have been on the test. Cities have become very engaged in economic development in some places. There are still places we go in which the council will give a score of 1 on this, because they have, as a group, have decided that's not their business, that they're going to leave it entirely to the private sector. You get to decide as a group how you want to approach economic development. A high score is the city that's decided that it's something the city should take an active role in. A low score is the city that's opted out. Okay? So give a score on how involved you are in economic development projects. Number eight, planning and goal setting. How well do you, as an organization, set the goals for the city, of what you want your city to be in the next 10 years? High score is, we do it well, we work with staff well, we create well-defined goals, whether through the budgeting or long-range planning process, and we have a vision for what we want our city to be. One of your jobs is to be that group that sets that vision. Everyone in town will have an opinion, but the public has trusted you with the ability to vote on that, to decide what Guthrie's going to be in the future. And if you don't do that job, no one will. Because somebody needs to set that vision and decide what you want to do. You heard on the video that, I believe from the Ponca City city manager, they don't put administrative things on the agenda, because you shouldn't waste your time with day-to-day administrative things. You should focus on those long-range planning things. A high score is the city that does that well, a low score is, we focus on day-to-day, we haven't gotten around to that yet. Number nine, how stable is management? You've turned a corner over the last few years, because there was a time in Guthrie was a revolving door for managers. It is important... It is important, and we know from the private sector, that stability in management will lead to success over time. It is an important part of how to run an organization. So our goal should be to have stable management. And that's not just city manager, it's upper management of the city. High score is we've been stable. If we have vacancies, we attract good people. It's considered a good place to work because we attract good people who want to be a part of our organization. A low score is that city that just has constant turnover, whether they need it or not. We've been in a city that had eight city managers in two years. Can't imagine they needed eight different changes in two years, but they did. And it's not a sign of a stable organization when that happens. Fortunately, when Bill and I go to those places, we get to ask questions and leave town. So I ask, did you make eight bad hires or is it a bad place to work? And they need to evaluate that and figure it out. I think they've, they've figured it out. But give a score of how stable is management? Because we know that you'll be more successful with stable management over time. And number 10 on the test, how well do we communicate as an organization? We see lots of times, a failure to communicate well leads to stress and difficulty. A high score is you're getting the information you need to make the decisions you need to make. Low score is I need to know what's going on around here. Okay? So that's the test. We'll gather those, we'll get a composite score, score back to you and get it to Kim so you can see how, how you evaluate yourself. Here's why I think the test is important. You'll notice we don't take it, you do. We want you to evaluate how you're doing and if there are areas in which you think you should improve, we would encourage you to put some thought and effort into how to get better. Because we think you can. Some of these are entirely within your control and can be improved upon by you doing it. But only by you doing it. So, I can give you an example of how we use this in Sand Springs. We take the test annually. We have quarterly work sessions that are long-range planning sessions. We usually take one of the 10 topics and we discuss and work on how we could get better at that topic. There is never an instance of blaming someone for why we're not doing better. It's always the question, what could we do to get better? For example, at public image. What could we do differently to improve how we score on that topic? And set some goals and set some ideas of how to do that, and then work toward those. So that's, that's how we see the test being used that will help you. If you will do that and work on those topics, we think there's room for improvement for everyone. And there are better ways to do it than for Guthrie. You're going to know what those are, not us. It really is an important part of what you do as elected officials. We've always been curious about why some cities are successful and stable over a long period of time and others aren't. Why does, why are some financially sound, some aren't? And we think we can help with some of that. This is a state average on the test, just so you'll have an idea. Public image is usually the lowest. Crisis management is usually the highest. Which is a good thing, that, that cities are prepared for crises, public image is just So, encourage you to have, I know you've got a full day of orientation and you'll have a chance to talk about some of that history and, and background to set some of those Covered finances, I think that's a good thing. You'll have in the printed material we leave with you, some ideas on each of these topics of what you can do to, to look at what you do. I know you've had a very aggressive handbook for the elected officials, that's a good thing. I would encourage you to, to use it, take it seriously, be up to speed with it. Again, each of these are just things you can look at to improve. I think with meetings, one of the things we focused on in other places in, in the last year or two has been, take a serious look at getting rid of the routine administrative things that are on your agenda and give those to staff to take care of. And, and that usually leads to the spending authority question. What is the spending authority for the manager? And is that set by charter or by ordinance? Charter. Yeah. We, we see a wide variety. It's all over the place. It becomes important because if it's below 25,000, staff and city manager have the authority to make those purchases. We see some cities in which they put it on the agenda anyway, and council votes on it anyway. Well, you've delegated that authority, use it. And I think the highest in spending authority we've seen for a city is 100,000. One of the highest these days. Lowest is, is much lower. If it's set by charter, the voters, voters have approved that, and that's what it is. Yes?
What city was that high?
Manford has 100,000. Which is kind of interesting. They, they tied it years ago, they tied it to the Competitive Bidding Act amount. So as the state competitive bidding amount changes, theirs changes for the manager. So it re, about two years ago, went to 100,000. City council's well aware of that change, when it happened, and, and is okay with it. They also, and I don't know if this is possible with your charter, it's something you'd have to look at. A lot of cities, cities I represent, and we've been, recommended it to others, we're doing project resolutions, in which we do a resolution for a project that delegates a lot of authority. For example, if you're building a million-dollar sewer line, what do we usually bring to council? We, we ask, can we bid it? We open bids, then we ask you to vote to accept the bids. We do a budget amendment at some point. We have change orders that come up along the way. We've gotten into the, into the process of just doing a project resolution that sets the budget. It delegates the authority to spend up to that budget. It authorizes the manager to make change orders, as long as they're within the budget.
Takes it all off the agenda.
Takes it all off the agenda and really makes it an administrative process to get built a sewer line. Which is not what you should be doing, right? You shouldn't be, and this came up because we were in a city in which they had an engineer come in to explain a $200 change order because council had to approve change orders. Well, they spent more money having the engineer come in and present it than, than the value of the change order. But they hadn't given them any authority for anyone to approve change orders. So we just do a project resolution. A good example in Manford, they're building a new city hall. We did a project resolution for a city hall police and fire station, it's a $10 million project. They delegated, spend $10 million in spending authority to the manager, go build it. Now, it has as a part of the resolution that he has to report monthly on the status. And it's on the agenda every month, give an update, give a report. But it's not on the agenda to approve paying the plumber. Because the plumber shouldn't have to wait until a meeting to get paid. The manager should have the authority to pay the plumber when the bill's due. And it's taken all of that administrative part.
I would point out, there's one exception about approving paid estimates from contractors on CBVG grants like our water line project on the division. Department of Commerce requires those to be approved by city council. So sometimes when you're given something like this, there are always exceptions. So there is an exception on that, and we bring those to you all because it's required as part of the grant process.
And the charter is usually the biggest thing we need to check and be sure. A lot of trying to, trying to, we talk about doing like that. The goal has been to get rid of administrative things that you, you really shouldn't be spending your time on.
David, how do you balance that? Being more efficient, if you will, as the operation of the council versus communication with the citizens of where the hell the money's being spent?
Yeah, great, great question. How do you, how do you get there? How do you, how do you, how do you balance all of those things? And I think you only get there if there's a high level of trust between the elected officials and the staff, in which you're getting the information you need, you are informed of what's going on, and you can explain it to the public, and you are explaining it to the public as you go. Communicating well, having a high level of trust, and having a high level of teamwork in how we're doing things. Yeah, and I think that's a difficult thing.
See, one of the challenges that I see is that the, the, the public has, needs to have a better understanding. Infrastructure's a huge problem in most of the cities, probably to deal with.
Yes, everywhere.
Clearly it is in Guthrie. And, and I don't think citizens understand the cost of putting that line out there, the cost of paving that road. And, and so, how do you educate and, and communicate that outside of the city council if you're, if you're not taking it as an agenda item?
Yeah. Great question. Some of, some of the good ways to do it, a couple of things. You have to do some of it at meetings. You have to give updates on projects. And it can be by update as opposed to voting on it. So voting on the administrative change order doesn't educate the public much, but giving a good update will. Working on how we can get better at getting to the public the good work we do. Cities do a horrible job in general of explaining what they do well, don't they? They really do. We usually don't do a good job of going back and saying, by the way, we put in that million-dollar sewer line. And it's going to be here for the next 50 years, and it's going to serve this part of town well. Even though it may be one of the expensive big projects that needed to be done. We just don't do a good, good job of explaining that, do we? I mean, cities just don't. And mostly because we're in the job of getting things done, not telling people how we do it or what we do, right? I mean, hasn't that been most of your career? It's, how do we get this accomplished? Not, how do I go tell everyone? I did. So that, that's a challenge. I think it's, some cities are very aggressive with social media and are doing a good job of getting information out. I think if you look at what Stillwater, Edmund, some of those are doing, it's, it's very good. There's some other probably examples nationally. What's, Aubrey, what's the best out there?
Round Rock Press is one of the ones I follow just because they're very consistent, they're always updating, putting good information out.
I think the point of is, we've got to look at what others are doing that we can copy and steal. That's what Bill and I made a career out of doing, right? Going around and stealing what others are doing so that we can pass it on. But I think that's the challenge. Some cities are doing that very well. Stillwater does, I think, a really good job of PR and getting, getting information out that's, that's working well. So, hopefully that would help. I'm not going to go through, I, I think, one of them was public image, most difficult issue. How do we promote the positive things? How do we get to a high level of confidence with the public? That really is what we're hoping to accomplish, isn't it? And that's very hard these days. There's so much anti-government sentiment, it's hard. Got to be open and transparent, honest about what we're doing. There's a lot of public pressure for us not to work well together, too. And we can't ignore that. And some cities fall into that trap. You've got to vote against things just to vote against things. It looks like, you probably have heard this, Mayor, it looks like all of you just vote the same. Was that a sign of failure or a sign of success? I think it's a sign of success. It's a sign that we're on the same page, we're working toward a common goal, we all have good information, and, and we can find a way to, to accomplish that. We shouldn't be criticized for that, should we? Just seems odd. Economic development, you guys seem to have done well. Lots of growth. Went through those quickly, but you've got a written copy, and I know you've got a full, full agenda. I don't know how much time we have, but I really wanted to leave some time for questions from, from the group of you. Who is new on council? I think, how, just since April?
Yes, sir.
What motivated you to want to do this?
I just kind of wanted to be the change that, or be the change that I wanted to see.
Good.
And kept saying, well, I wish somebody would do this or do that. So you take, take the mantle yourself.
What's your vision for Guthrie in 10 years or 20 years? What would you like to see accomplished over time? Because most of what we do is going to take time.
I'd like to see us be the biggest tourist attraction in the state of Oklahoma, in this region of the country, considering our historical significance.
Yeah. You've got the opportunity to do that.
Yeah, yeah, we do.
You really do. You have a downtown that's unique to Oklahoma. You've made a lot of progress with a lot of things.
And then the non, we call those the sexy things. But the, out of sight, out of mind, I would like for us to figure out a way for the infrastructure. And I know that's every, every town, but we're going to, we're going to have to really buckle down, considering the age of our town and our community with our water pipes and stuff. Ours is a lot older than a lot of other municipalities. So that's kind of the, out of sight, out of mind, I really, really hope we get under control in 10 years.
It will be a continuous process the entire time you serve. It just will. It, it never goes away, does it? I mean, it's, it's, it's like saying, I'd like to buy a new car and never have to buy another one. You will. It'll wear out.
Isn't it also kind of like on your house? I've noticed when I fix something, I'll move on to other things, then in about seven, eight years, I'll loop back around to the stuff I had just done, and it never kind of...
Yeah. You have to redo it again. If you serve long enough, those water lines you replace, will need to be replaced again.
Re-replaced again, yeah, that's right.
Those are good goals.
We've got a, we've got a great group of private sector people that are really working on that goal. You're one of them. That are really working on the goal of bringing more tourism to Guthrie. The Red Brick Nights and all the things that we do downtown now. There's a, there's a, there's something almost every weekend in Guthrie. So it's, it's really exciting, you know? And he's wanting to do more, and I, I applaud it.
Were you new also, or you've served once before?
I served on the city council 25 years ago. I have questions about your instrument. Was the instrument tested for reliability and validity before you developed it?
What do you mean, the training material?
The survey that you just did.
It's been tested over the last 15 years. I think, that's, that's a good question. How reliable is the survey? The, the self-evaluation? I think we've, we've continuously reevaluated how reliable it is. There are some places we know the test is flawed because we will go places, and I'll give you an example. Everyone will give a 10 on every score. That's not a true self-evaluation.
And that's a, that's a deviant responder problem. Has it been fact, have you done a factor analysis on it? Because I'm going to guess that everything loads on one factor.
No, we really haven't. True statistical analysis that way. Sounds like that may be your background in statistical analysis.
I have a PhD, yes. So, have you used the survey to run any kind of more than just descriptive statistics? To, to test it on a dependent variable? For example, taking towns under, you know, 10,000, between 10,000 and 50,000, 50,000 to analyze whether the data breaks out using an analysis of variance or regression?
Population-based, yes. We, we've broken it down.
For our demographic information for staff.
I hear volunteer. I hear that, Jim.
No, it wouldn't be interesting to see.
I mean, I think it could be, I think it could be used for a lot of different things that you could use, you could have some predictive value in it, if you had some reliability, validity testing. But I think you, you do get communities where you're going to have an overwhelming deviant responder.
Right.
Or a lack of understanding of what the instrument is actually testing.
Correct.
Well, we, our experience, which is anecdotal, the language you would use, is that people take this test seriously, and we don't see a lot of chamber of commerce answers, not a lot of like wobbling on, where all the men are good-looking and women are strong.
And all the children are bug out.
We don't see that usually. And, you know, the value that will, will maybe gain more value because we have more than 10 years, 15 years of test results. The value we say in the test is that if you will take it every year, regardless of whether we show up or not, that you'll be telling the city council in 2032, the trends over time, are you getting better, staying the same, or getting worse in these 10 key areas of municipal operations? You know, we're currently benefiting from the decisions that got made 10 years ago, or we're suffering from them. So, when we suggest that we do things like document things in a resolution book, that way for the council to speak with one voice to staff, like for example on reports, what's the format, the content, the frequency of the reporting that you want to see?
Or a financial... Or a financial policy.
Or the financial policy. And some people will say, "Well, why do we need to do that? We're already getting those reports, we're already doing it." Well, you're doing it so that you can tell the council in 2032, why we do what we do, the way we do it in Guthrie. Because most places we go, 99% of the places we go, it doesn't look like this. Oh, hey, congratulations. We're glad you decided to assert this as your seat. This is yes, this is no. Try not to break anything. That's the orientation that we do. And if you think it's unfair to you, you ought to be one of these other folks. It's grossly unfair to them, because now we're running on a flat tire. Or worse, we're driving a boat anchor, because somebody thinks that the water tire needs to be painted yellow. And they're not impressed until it is, because that's the only thing they ran on. Well, it's more to the life than paint the water tire yellow. So, you have my card. We'd be happy to see what correlations or regression analysis we could come up with as far as validity tests, we haven't done that. We do think the test is valid on anecdotal level, because of what we see. We see people typically take the test seriously.
Yeah. So, what was your service like 25 years ago when you served? I'd be curious.
It was chaotic. It was chaotic.
And why?
We, it was, you know, Guthrie had a reputation of going through city managers. And that's, you know, and being a community that was very divided on the vision of what we were going to be. I mean, it was very divided. You had people in town who did not want to have tourism, because they couldn't park right in front of the post office, right? I mean, that was their whole, that was their whole bench, was they couldn't park right in front of the post office and walk right in. I thought if you couldn't park in front of the post office, that was a good day, right?
Right.
I mean, if you're looking for parking, that's a good day. But we've had a few deaths since then, so. There's nothing that a few timely demises can't do sometimes.
And I assume you came back because you're hopeful it can be better?
Yeah, I mean, I'm interested in economic development for the city, so.
Good, good. Mayor, any questions, comments, things we can help with?
Well, I, you know, I think you already are helping. I thought it was an interesting, and I jotted it down, interesting subject to use the 10 elements as a foundation piece for your strategic planning process. And I think, I think the questions that you, that are up there in this test are more one of thought-provoking, of what the heck are we doing? And how do we get, how do we get from a six to a seven? Or a one to a three, you know, or a nine to a 10? How do we do that?
And it comes back to your job, doesn't it? What is your job? And one of the comments in the video was, you're the board of directors for a municipal corporation. And sometimes that's hard to accept. You, as a group, will set the direction for the organization. And that really is a very comparable, with a public component to it, very comparable to what the description of your job is. You are the board of directors, who is going to determine the direction of the city. Obviously, a public component, charter restrictions on how you can do it, and institutional background that sometimes gets in the way. But how do we function at a high level as a board of directors? And we know that the successful board of directors is the one that finds a way to work well together. Doesn't mean everyone agrees. If the idea was, we had to have 100% agreement all the time, we'd just have one person instead of seven. But how do we build a consensus? How do we work well together? How do we set clear goals? And how do we determine what we want to be and work toward getting there? And you've been mayor long enough to know, all of it is a process. It's slow, it's sometimes difficult. There are financial restraints, you can't do everything you want to do. But you've got to keep, when you look back at some points, you're going to say, "Boy, there was a lot of success."
And we've had it here.
And you've had it. And it is important to recognize that. We have other videos, and one of these days, we'll get better at getting all the videos in the right place. But it is interesting. One of the very successful mayors, we asked on video once, what's the most successful thing you've done? You've been a very successful mayor over a long period of time, with tremendous growth in your city. What's the most important of all of those things you've built or done? And he said, "We built a team that could work well together." Because if we hadn't done that, none of the rest of it would have been done. And I think as a group, each of you has a responsibility to be a part of that. And find a way to do that, and you'll be successful. Well, thanks for having us. Bill, anything you want to add?
Mayor, you guys are always gracious and generous with your time. Thank you for letting us come out. Appreciate the opportunity, appreciate what you've always done during this tenure here. Before, it was successful, it was your new manager. So, thank you very much for letting us come out.
Appreciate you.
Go through this page by page.
Leroy, I guess you're up next.
Yeah. Do you want a break before we start, or?
Let's just go, let's just go for it.
I'll be with you.
Orientation handbook, there we go, do this slide. So, we have parts of that, if you want to flip through it to kind of stay up. Can fill up them lights a little bit.
There's no way that in a morning, we can go through everything that council needs to be aware of. So, some of this will be highlights. But if we need to follow up or address questions, I'll be looking at my screen and my slides to some degree. So, for example, Tracy, you're kind of in my side vision. If you have a question, speak up. If you, yes, feel free to speak up. Leroy, I got a question or something. If I don't see you, raise your hand. Same way with staff. Just don't throw any knives. I'll be happy. One of the things, just some communication to me is key to productive and successful relationship. And I like the one on the left, where it says, "We've got two ears and one mouth, so we can listen twice as much as we speak." And I think that slide says a lot. There's a lot of reasons to have orientation, and you all have time to read those and can agree or disagree. But I think having this is a good orderly transition, not only for new council members, but the blending of new council members and current council members into a team effort. And team effort is a big thing for us. You just went through Omag's presentation. On ours, the first part will be talking about council responsibilities and powers, and what else is involved there. And so, the first one that we'll talk about is organizational structure. And then, the second part of the presentation, we'll be talking about municipal operations. Two big things to remember that the city council does every year that sets the stage. One is the budget. When you do the budget, that is your biggest policy document. That's telling staff, where do you want to put your priority as far as how to use the resources, financial resources you have, and what you're going to fund that year. The second one is the council retreat, where you set your goals for the next year, the next two or three years. That tentatively has been set for Friday, August the 11th. I believe that's in play, and may be a different date. So, that's not been finalized. But those are two of your biggest efforts. The budget and the planning retreat. One of them determines how you go use the money for the next 12 months. The other one is what are your priorities? First presentation slide is the hierarchy of legal authority. And I'm going to take time to flip through this as I go. Of course, the Supreme Clause, U.S. Constitution, everything we do has to fit U.S. Constitution. So, you hear a lot on public speaking, on the mask mandate we had during COVID. You know, there are provisions in the Constitution, freedom of speech, freedom to assemble. Those things, any ordinance, charter, state constitution, everything has to comply with the U.S. Constitution. And at the federal level, there are also federal laws and treaties. It doesn't affect us as much in Guthrie, because we were part of the unassigned lands. But tribal sovereignty is a treaty with all the Native American tribes. That is a big thing in Oklahoma. And the relationship between state municipal government and tribal governments, and how that coordinates even to how the legal system works in those areas. Fortunately, in some respects, we're left out of that, because we were part of the unassigned land. Then we deal with federal regulations from the environmental regulations that we have to deal with. At the state level, of course, Oklahoma's state constitution is the supreme law for the state of Oklahoma. And then from there, the Oklahoma state laws. Most of the things that cities deal with as far as their operating procedures is the Title 11, cities and towns, Oklahoma municipal government. So, for example, things Adam has talked about, some things dealing with cleanup and maintenance of the various buildings in downtown. And we've explored that. And for example, Norman came up with a process where you had to register the buildings if they were vacant. And each year, the registration fee got higher, to try to encourage people to get something in the building. Well, the state legislature passed a state statute that made that illegal. And so, that, so whenever you're going to look at doing something at the local level, you have to make sure that it's in consistency with the federal regulations you deal with in state. And that's part of why you have a city attorney and experienced city staff to do that research. And then, of course, case law. Any city ordinance you adopt have to be able to withstand the challenge of a court challenge. If it was unconstitutional, it could be thrown out. Many times, laws are further defined by judicial decisions that set precedence on how those laws are implemented in the future. At municipal level, city charter, that's our supreme document. Everything we do has to be consistent with our city charter. Municipal charter provisions supersede all state statutes in conflict therewith insofar as such laws relate to purely municipal affairs. For example, vacancies on the city council. With Mr. Channel resigning, the length of that vacancy by state law, we would have had a special election. But our charter says that the city council appoints to fill that vacancy. Because it's a local issue, our charter prevails over the state statute. And that's why we follow the process of our city charter. So, you have to kind of know, when you're looking at doing something, how does it play out as far as all these different laws and regulations you have to follow? Of course, our city ordinances do not supersede state statute. We can make it more restrictive, but not less restrictive than the state statute. So, just briefly, to give you an idea of what you have to follow. The next topic, I'm going to talk about the city charter. And I have put the charter in there. I will tell you, if you go to the charter or even the city ordinances online, there is a lifetime. And the charter online, there's a few provisions that are on the online version that are not in the current city charter, because it gets amended by voters of people. And so, for example, if you go out online and read the charter, it says if somebody abstains from a vote, it's not counted as a no vote. But if you look at the actual charter, it says if somebody abstains, it's counted as a no vote. So, when you look at the charter online, I would check with staff to make sure that it's consistent with that actual charter. When you adopt a new ordinance, there's a lifetime, because you codify those ordinances periodically. Sometimes there's a lifetime between when that ordinance is adopted and when it gets out on the online version. So, when you look at that, it's pretty much up to date, but there are some lags between the online version and the hard copy. One of the biggest issues that you face is what is the role of the city council relative to day-to-day administration? And this is, it is a gray area, and it is difficult. But if you look at our city charter, the charter appoints the city manager, the city clerk, treasurer, city attorney, and city judge. And when we get to staff later in your handout, you will notice, city council appoints the city clerk and the city treasurer, but they work under the supervision of the city manager, not city council. The second item, city council may, while in session as a body, as a group, inquire in the conduct of an office, department, or agency of the city. The editorial notes not in the charter, but just to point out, you notice this does not state an individual city council member. So, you go on to section 227, city council not to interfere in appointments and removals except for purposes of inquiry. Well, you have to tie section 227 and 220. When it says, "Except for the purpose of inquiry," well, inquiry is done by the full body. So, the full body could say, "Okay, we want these two councilmen, this committee, to look at this." Or this individual. But individual councilmen are not supposed to decide, "Well, I want to go down to the water plant today and see how it operates, and decide they need a forklift, or they need this or that for operation." When you inquire, it's supposed to go through the administrative service of the, solely through the city manager. So, every inquiry you make relative to day-to-day operation is supposed to start with the city manager, not directly to the department. I didn't make that rule. Eddie didn't make that rule. The previous ten city managers didn't make that rule. That is just the form of government that our community has adopted. And the charter sets it out, and that is our primary doctrine. And I know it's easy to get excited about a project and think, "Well, I'll just pick up the phone and call Tenney." Or, "I'll pick up the phone and call City Planner about something." It's supposed to go through the city manager and keep the city manager blog. We could spend all day discussing the pros and cons of this, but this is how our form of government's set up.
Well, just apologizing out.
There, sometimes it can become great. And there are even times in, you know, "I have a speech, stay in your effing lane," that I normally give privately. So, I'm very rigorous about following this process. But there are times that I will tell council members, and I'll tell staff, rather than me be a middle person, and I talk to Tenney about an issue and call you back and have to re-explain it, I know that you're interested in this topic, call Tenney directly. And I will give times where I actually... call Tenny directly, and I will give times where I say, I know you were interested in this. I know what's going on. I'm in the loop. But rather than me find out the information, we're laying back. Just, and then when Tenny responds by email, he copies me, so I see it. So there are times that you can, but it starts with going through this interview.
And I found out that to be absolutely true. And I appreciate the way you do that. If I've ever shown an interest in anything, you've been quick to get back with me. Or just a question, you find out the answer. Or in one case, you said, go ahead and talk directly to Tenny on this. I've already talked to him. So, yeah, it was a good thing. I appreciate it.
And it keeps us all in the loop. The city manager powers and duties. City manager hires and fires all of the department heads and employees. That is solely the city manager's responsibility. Council cannot even be involved in the hiring process. Exercise actual management control and supervision of all the departments. Prepares the budget annually and submits to the council. And, of course, it's with the assistance of city clerk and finance director, but that is one of the responsibilities of the city manager. Other articles, something that comes up, dual office holding. Councilman Taylor is on a state advisory committee because it is advisory only. He can serve on that state committee. But if it was a state body that had a decision-making authority, he would have to decide whether he wanted to be on the city council or that state body, because you can't be on two decision-making bodies. So if you are ever asked to be on at the state level or county level, you can't have dual offices if they're both decision-making bodies. Conflict of interest, I will talk about that a little more later. Nepotism. City manager and city councilman cannot have relatives by blood or marriage within a third degree that work for the city. Just pointing out some of the highlights. City ordinances, that book is about as thick as the book that you have for today's orientation, but it's divided up by chapters. If you want to do any of your research, it's easy to find online. Many times, staff will do research for you if you have a topic that you're interested in and provide you a starting point. Here's the, many times for council members, I would say, okay, here's the relative statutes. Here's our city ordinances. Here's where our charter talks about it. And staff can be quite a resource for you to make sure that you are looking up the appropriate rules and regulations. In the building and plumbing, those are all adopted by reference. So there's a separate section. You go to the find those. Under planning and zoning, Chapter 16, zoning code subdivision regulations, also adopted by reference, so you have to go to a different section to find those. So that's kind of the outline. Next thing to talk about is public trust. Public trusts are created under the Public Trust State Statute in Title 60, Section 176. One thing that a lot of councilmen are not initially aware of, the Public Works Authority, the Economic Development Authority, can do things outside the city limits if it benefits the city. You're not restricted in a public trust to actions only within the city boundaries. For example, you can have a water plant outside the city limits. You could have a sewer plant outside the city limits. So you can buy property, do projects outside of the city limit boundaries if it has a benefit to the community, to the city of Guthrie. But the Public Works Authority is our primary trust. It is an enterprise fund, and by enterprise fund, that means that it operates primarily with business principles. It's supposed to pay its own way. Most of the things on, under the general fund are more service-oriented. It doesn't generate a revenue source to pay their own way. Police, fire, library, airport, those things don't generate their own revenue to pay for their operations. But water treatment, distribution, wastewater, the convenience center, stormwater drainage, those are all things. We don't have a stormwater drainage utility. A lot of cities do to pay for stormwater drains. We just roll it in with our Public Works Authority. But those entities should operate primarily with business principles where they generate their own revenue source through user fees to pay for those operations. The Economic Development Trust Authority is a tool that you will have, the, just like you're the trustees of the Public Works Authority, you're also the trustees of the Economic Development Authority. So if you issue TIF bonds or something like that, you would probably do that under your Economic Development Authority. The one that we have not used since I've been here is the Transportation Trust Authority. That is another one to do roads and bridges. We have just done it under other opportunities without using the Transportation Authority. But remember, that tool is out there. And the last authority we have is the Housing Authority that pretty much operates on its own. The only involvement, the last sentence there, "The mayor with the advice and consent of the governing body shall appoint the five housing authority commissioners." So other than deciding if the housing authority's not operated the way the city council desires, you can make changes by who you appoint to the housing authority board over time. And that's really the only involvement the city has. Next item that talk about is Open Meetings Act. And I'm going through this fairly quickly. This PowerPoint was put together by one of the Attorney Generals. And the purpose of Open Meeting Act in open records, especially Open Meeting Act, is not for participation of the general public in the business meetings. It is for their awareness, so that they know what the city... It is not for them to participate unless it's a public hearing in the actual decision-making process of how the city government works. I'm not getting involved in the public comment section before. That's a separate item. But as far as the purpose of the Open Meetings Act is so the public has an opportunity to witness and be aware of every action taken by the city council. Public bodies define governing bodies, municipalities. Committees or subcommittees are those public bodies with decision-making authority. The city council has two standing committees. One of them is a street committee. Street committees here decides along with public works, what streets were going overland that year. We've got about 400,000 we use for streets and ADA improvements. Because they are a recommending body, they meet, come to city council and say, okay, we're gonna spend $200,000 in overland streets. These are streets we recommend. City council then takes action. They're not a final decision. They're recommending. That's why those three council members, when they meet, that's not an open meeting. Finance committee is the other one. Looks at if we're gonna do something new as far as rate structure. They would meet and discuss that. They met on utility bills, on how we handle delinquent utility bills that are more challenging than beyond our administrative capacity to handle administratively. We'll take those to the finance committee for recommendations. So if it's a committee that is purely recommending, they can. An exception to that, all of our advisory boards, park board, library board, they're all advisory capacity. But as a collective body, our city government has always determined that while they may not be held to the standard, all of our advisory committees, park, those meetings are open to general play. And we treat them as public bodies, even though an argument could be made, since they don't have decision-making authority, they would not. We have always made decisions, all of our advisory boards are open to the public. Now, some of them have to be plan commission, district preservation commission, some of those, because they do have some decision-making authority. But parks board has no decision-making authority, but we treat it as a board that does, and their meetings are posted and open to the public. Administrative staff meetings. So if city manager has a meeting with a private industry or a group of citizens to talk about something, that is not a public meeting. Again, public bodies fact-finding. When conducting business, anytime you got a quorum together and they're talking about city business, that is a public meeting. So even if, or if you go to dinner afterwards and you're talking about public business, even though you may not be making a final decision, that is a public meeting. Anytime, and if you go, I think it is the next slide. There is a gray area where you can call other council members or visit with other council members. And if it's two other council members and there's only three of you involved in the conversation, then it's not a quorum. But when you call the fourth one, it's a gray area. Clearly, if you ask three other councilmen, how do you go vote on this item? That's a violation of Open Meeting Act. But some people try to skirt that and say, well, I didn't ask them how they're gonna vote. But what do you think about this? Are you supportive of this? Well, you're not technically asking them how they're gonna vote, but you're asking them, are you supportive of this? That's a slippery slope. That's getting very close to asking them how they're gonna vote. And our recommendation is to be careful anytime you create, I call it a tree, where it branches out to a quorum. One individual councilman branching out to three more, now you've got a quorum involved. And we don't think that's a good idea. Now, you can skirt that law if you want. The other thing you have to be careful with, social media we have today, you'll notice any of the communications sent out by city staff, we blind copy the council members so that council members can't become actively engaged in discussion. It's an informational piece. They can only respond one councilman at a time to that, but they can't respond to each other. So if you go and communicate, you can't set it up where you're creating what I call a tree where branches out and you're getting others involved. With social media today, you also have to be careful. I saw recently where a post was done by a council member and three other council members were tagged. If those other council members started responding to that post, then you have dialogue between potentially more than one. The actual post tagging them wasn't, but it could have led to the situation where they all responded because they were all brought into that discussion. Not saying that was wrong, but it could lead to the next step that created a problem. So you have to be careful whenever you're communicating with more, with a quorum, which would be four in your case. There's four different types of meetings. Regular scheduled meetings. And those are the ones that's regular scheduled. Every December, you will adopt a schedule of regular meetings, not only for the city council, but Public Works Authority, all of the different boards, library board, parks board. There's a complete list with their schedule of their regular meetings. Anything outside of those regular meetings are special meetings. A regular meeting, you have to have 24 hours' notice. And you have to post your agenda 24 hours before. And it has to be detailed enough that people know what business you go transact. If it's not on the agenda, you can't discuss it. You can't take action. If it's a special meeting, it's 48 hours' notice. And that doesn't include weekends and holidays. So you have to work with the city clerk if you want to. Most of the time, staff takes care of all this, but say there's an item that you want to address and you think it's important enough to have a special meeting. You will want to work with the city manager and city clerk to get that scheduled so you follow all of the open meeting requirements to structure that meeting. And again, if it's a special meeting, you can only address the agenda items that were put out in the call for that special meeting. Emergency meetings, if we had a tornado go through town and we had to decide whether we were going to institute martial law and have a curfew, that would be an emergency meeting that you could call without notice so that you could protect the life and safety of people. So if some catastrophic event, you would have a special meeting. A continued or reconvene meeting is a function that we don't use very often. But if you have a meeting that, say you needed additional research and you didn't want to wait two weeks, you could recess that meeting on a Tuesday night, say, okay, we're gonna get together Thursday afternoon at 4:00 and reconvene to discuss that further. We want staff to have a day to do some additional research. So you could have a continued or reconvene meeting if it was necessary. Sometimes it comes in play where you don't have a quorum show up, but it's an item that can't wait two weeks. Well, with less than a quorum, you can have one member present and they can schedule a continued meeting. Say you had two people, two councilmen showed up. They can continue the meeting till on a Tuesday night to Thursday or Friday. And by motion, even though there's not a quorum there, if they know that the rest of the group would be available on Friday. That's a tool you don't use very often, but there are times because of the nature of the business you're dealing with, can't wait two weeks, and you need to either reconvene the meeting to address it or call a special meeting. But it's a tool you don't use. Open records, you all won't deal with that. That's primarily handled administratively and through the city clerk and the city attorney. If somebody, of course, anything that's public record, you can go to city manager and get whatever you want. But the general public, if they want something through open records, we require all of them to file an open records request through the city clerk. So you won't deal with that. Tort's claims, our tort's claim process is different than the private sector. Primarily, the city is owned... Primarily, the city is only responsible for things they have knowledge of. Somebody steals a stop sign in the middle of the night and the city's not aware of that, stop sign is gone. And somebody runs that where a stop sign used to be and there's an accident. City's not liable for that because we were not aware that the stop sign was missing. If we get a call the next day and somebody says, hey, the stop sign that used to be at this intersection, somebody took it last night. And we are slow to respond and don't address it, then we take on liability. Acts of God, we're not responsible for. A lot of times on sewer backups, we're not responsible for those as long as we're doing regular maintenance on the sewer system. If we're aware that tree roots are blocking a sewer system, then, and we don't address it, we ignore it, then we take on liability because we're aware of the problem. But if, until we're aware of it, we don't take our responsibility. You see an elderly person that has a sewer backup, the first thing you want to do, well, we ought to, we ought to clean that up. But by legality, we are not legally responsible. So OMAG is our insurer. What we do is we send all of our tort claims, where people think they have a claim against the city, to OMAG to review, they make the recommendation, and many times, they decide on whether it's something we're liable to pay. We don't decide that. We have to be careful as staff and council members when somebody comes to us and we think, what would be the normal civil situation versus public body? Oh, yeah, the city ought to take care of that. Well, you'll hear that in court, that you said, the, the city ought to, then you'll find out later that the city really wasn't liable for it. So the best thing, when somebody comes to you and they think they have a claim against the city, is to advise them to fill out a tort claim and go through the process. Don't make a decision on this bottom. It's in your book, how to get, go through that. Conflict of interest is one that is interesting at times. Our charter and the state constitution is more restrictive than the state statute. And that's the only state statute I've seen that is less restrictive than the charter, I mean, the state constitution. The constitution, our charter says directly or indirectly. The state statute says proprietary interest. In your book, I've included an attorney general's opinion, directly or indirectly, which is the terminology used in the state constitution and the city charter. For example, Councilman Bothroyd was interested in his company doing the phone system for the city. He wasn't, he worked for that company. He was not going to be paid out of that project, have no involvement in it. But because he works for that company, it was an indirect involvement. And his company could not bid on putting our phone system in. At one time, Councilman Williams worked for a vendor that hauled rock for the city. That vendor had to decide whether to give that contract up or Tracy would have to work for a different employer to sit on the city council, even though he did the hauling rock on the county side and his payment didn't actually come out of the job from the city. It was an indirect involvement. So ours is more restrictive. You cannot be, have ownership in the business. You can't even work for a company that's doing business with the city. The only reason that Mr. Channel could be on the council is that there was an attorney general's opinion that when somebody provides a records service, that payment's not coming from the city. He's not working for the city, he's working for the private individual that he's telling for, even though he gets a call from the police department, the payment comes from the private individual. That's how Mr. Channel could be on there. Again, the city staff is here to help you research and answer any questions you might have. There is a code of ethics. I think you have already signed your signing page, wasn't that on one of the things? So that is, yeah. Again, Council Row, the council serves as the legislative arm of the city, while the city manager is the executive responsible for day-to-day operations. I know that gets word, and this is a rough way to say it. But when you adjourn the meeting and you go out these doors, you're no more than a private citizen. You have no authority as an individual. You can't speak for the city because you don't represent the city as one person. You only represent the city as a quorum, or if you represent the city, not more. And so you need to remember that individually, you do not have authority to do anything. It's when you're as a group and there's a quorum. And that's kind of a slap, a rough way to say it, but that's really how it works. This is just some things. Council members should not appear at city hall or other city, department to city, and direct office personnel to perform any duties on behalf of the council member. Council members shall not appear in emergency scenes and expect to have any input into handling of the situation. And we have all these occurrences. I spent more time dealing with this issue than maybe a lot of issues I should have spent spending time on. You don't show up at public work sites. Those are things that you don't do. The next part is going through departments and...